Could we have a flag salute led by you, Isaiah?
Sure is. I'm going to ask Jeremy Gleim, our Development Services Director, to lead us today. Jeremy?
Yes, thank you. Please stand. And begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under the Constitution of Liberty and of Justice.
And Christie, could we go on to roll call, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Kite?
Here.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Here.
Councilmember Townsend?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wile?
Here.
Mayor Hobart?
Also here. And thank you for that. And we move now to non-agenda public comments. And Isaiah, would you please handle that?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. This is the non-agenda public comment section of the meeting. This is an opportunity for a member of the public to speak on issues that are not on our agenda for a maximum of three minutes. If you are participating remotely and you would like to make a non-agenda public comment, you would hit star nine on your telephone or the raise hand button on Zoom to make a non-agenda public comment. Now, before we go to our remote audience, we will go to those that are here in person. We have one speaker card that's been filled in, so we'll do that one first. Jared Danin Shanstrom.
All right. Hello, my name is Jared Danin Shanstrom, and I'm a member of Vron RM. I'm here today in response to Councilwoman Smotrich's correction of my statement at the last council meeting. Councilwoman Smotrich, once again, you are wrong. While you did not come to a decision in less than 24 hours on the subcommittee, your alternative facts are very misleading. This is a letter from the city manager sent on October 19th. It lays out that the subcommittee is recommending no modification to the ordinance. Councilwoman Smotrich, you replied over just one and a half hours later, and I quote, "Many thanks, Isaiah. Good summary. Glad we made decisions and finished it today." Again, that was just two business days of work. Councilmember Smotrich, you said that there were three weeks in between meetings. I think it's important you're transparent with the public. While that is true, there were three weeks between meetings. Your insinuation is that you considered both sides of this ordinance for three weeks. However, you said in your email you glad you finished it and glad you finished it in only two business days. I think I don't understand why you and Councilmember Townsend seem to be taking a lot of credit for this subcommittee, because while reviewing all of the correspondence between the council, most of the work was really done by Councilmember Wile and the city staff. Mayor Hobart? I direct this next question to you. As a mayor of such an esteemed city as yourself and someone who has a significant legal background, and my understanding is that you even spoke in front of the Supreme Court, how could you allow Councilmember Smotrich to vote on this ordinance, let alone be head of the subcommittee? Recusals are obviously part of your daily business, as you yourself recused yourself from the In-N-Out Burger proceedings. And Councilwoman Smotrich recused herself from an item on the agenda of the October 15th meeting about a home being built that was located within 500 feet of her home. I assume her neighbor, the STR next door, is also within 500 feet. So Mayor Hobart, I ask that you answer this question today. Why did you not ask Councilmember Smotrich to recuse herself, as her comments obviously state she has a conflict of interest? If you aren't sure what statement I'm referring to, I'd be happy to play the recording. I eagerly await your response. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker is Wally Melendez.
Good afternoon, City Council of Rancho Mirage. Thanks to the Brown Act that we have this opportunity to speak to the elected officials of Rancho Mirage. And so we survived this past four years. We were in a lot of danger. And we passed through it thanks to the National Guard. But we are not past all the danger, as you know. But we are in a lot better position than four years ago. Mr. Biden and Kamala Harris and Nancy Pelosi from California, I think are upstanding individuals and real Americans, not crooked crooks. So so we're waiting for the shots, for the COVID shots. And then we'll feel a lot better psychologically and physically, hopefully. So thank God. We're pulling the train back on the track. So I leave you with hope and peace and love. And by the way, I'm going to be 76 years old next month on the 11th. Thank you very much.
Happy birthday.
Thank you for your comment. We'll now go to our remote audience, Brad Anderson. You are next.
Yes, hi. My name's Brad Anderson. I live in the city of Rancho Mirage. A few things I'd like to comment on today. I noticed on the minutes of the last city council meeting were incorrect and actually avoided or, I guess, refused to put a lot of detailed information concerning the mayor's comments. And that's after I left the meeting, so I had to review it on your videotape or YouTube channel, I guess it is. Either way, and so you need, I think you should, I highly recommend that you correct those minutes to actually accurately dictate or refer to what actually happened at that meeting. And because it does look kind of suspicious. Well, it is suspicious, so. And I would say, one of my main complaints today is I contacted the city on several occasions through emails and phone calls, and I've never received any phone calls. I received an email from the city clerk, but I haven't heard anything about the ADA compliance of the building that I requested. And that's really concerning when you have people like today trying to attend meetings and maybe not feeling safe in that environment that you have at City Horror. And I guess my concern is with the legal counsel, too. I'd like to see that go out to request for some kind of proposals for a different counselor, because there's conflicts of interest involved with a lot of the other special districts in the city. And of course, there's the hot springs being a good example of what happens when you don't take care of things. But and also, one of the speakers earlier stated something about curating yourself or dismissing yourself from critical votes of the city council for conflicts of interest. And I agree. Iris just, I'm sorry, I missed, I can't remember her last name, sorry. But she definitely had the conflict of interest on many of her votes, and so does Mr. Kite concerning a lot of things. And that'll come up later on, but I just wanted to put that out there and put you on notice. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no one else remotely. Is there anyone here in person that didn't fill out a speaker card that wants to make a non-agenda public comment? Okay, seeing no more speakers. Sorry, we have one more on the remote audience. Tony Foster?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead and make your comment.
Great, thanks. My name's Tony Foster. I'm a member of Vron Rancho Mirage and own a home in the Tam Risk area, which was used from time to time as a short-term rental. I wanted to comment on the ban of STRs, and I believe the decision to ban in public neighborhoods while allowing those in HOAs to continue was rushed, and here's why. The reason stated for the ban in the public neighborhoods was based on an increased number of complaints due to COVID, very few actual violations or citations issued. And it was extremely probable that the increased rentals from COVID were in fact temporary, and therefore complaints would have been temporary. It was also stated that this only applies to public neighborhoods because the complaint percentage was slightly higher this year, not typically, than that in HOAs, and that HOAs can police their own STRs. But that's not really the case since code compliance received several complaints from HOA neighborhoods. Also, according to the public records, there were over 185 letters and emails from people opposing the ban, and only about 28 from people for the ban. From that list of the 28 complaints for the ban, there was no verification that the respondents lived in public areas. And in fact, reading through those letters from those that were for the ban, some of them stated they live in HOAs. And obviously, people in HOAs that have STRs benefit from supporting the ban in public neighborhoods, as they would be the only option in Rancho Mirage. Enhanced STR measures were applied after the public neighborhood ban, including increased license fees and stricter rules that would help equip code compliance with the resources to monitor STRs and ideally eliminate the bad actors. However, STRs in public neighborhoods were not given the chance to operate under these new conditions. In fact, we were not even given a wind-down period like most, if not all, other cities when they banned short-term rentals. Nope, we were given less than 30 days to cancel our 2021 reservations and basically told if you can't afford it, do long-term or sell. I think you can see that based on the above, there's favoritism to HOAs, and it seems that this was given, this was not given the same consideration as, say, In-N-Out or Porcupine Creek. Every city council meeting, you have the opportunity to reconsider this rest decision and allow STR owners to continue operating while you develop a wind-down period or additional rules. Please do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no more speakers, we will close the non-agenda public comment period, and I will turn this back over to you, Mr. Mayor, for council member comments.
Thank you, Isaiah. Do any of our members have comments they'd like to make? Please raise your hand and I'll call on you. Dana, I have a comment.
Yeah, please go ahead, Richard.
Thank you, Dana. It's my pleasure to be here today, and I just want to speak briefly about the Children's Discovery Museum. As you know, the Children's Discovery Museum has been in existence for almost 30 years. And over 20 years, I've found a place to handle the youth in the area, and it's very near and dear to my heart. I'd like to introduce today the new interim executive director, Cindy Burson. Cindy has stepped up during a critical time for the museum. She's been working overseas, overseeing everyday operations and heading up the fundraising efforts. Cindy also works as a senior catering manager at the Renaissance Els Merlde Hotel, and she juggles many community involvements. She's married and is a proud mother of two boys, ages eight and 10. Cindy comes to the museum with managerial experience with Tommy Bahama's Restaurant and the Marriott International. She's a community leader and influencer, having been recognized as the Businessperson of the Year for the Palm Desert Chamber of Commerce and the Excellence in Hospitality Service Award from the Palm Springs CVB. She also volunteers and serves many community activities throughout the area, serves on many boards and nonprofits. So thank you, Cindy, for helping to lead the museum's efforts. Everyone is curious about the future of the museum. Due to the state mandates, the museum closed in March of 2020, but it did continue offering some virtual programming. In October 2020, the Board of Directors made a decision to close the museum completely. Due to the pandemic and lack of funding, the museum will now remain closed for the near term. Reopening will depend on fundraising activities and the community's support in these efforts. The Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert services the needed to the various children in the area, and it's actually needed more today than it's ever been in existence. The vision of the museum is hopeful and exciting. The museum wants to continue its mission and vision, which is to be a valuable community resource for children and their families. They want to reopen with a reimagined main gallery and introduce new and relevant programming to address the variety of topics and age ranges. They want to provide an engaging learning opportunity to service all of the Coachella Valley and its visitors. Today, we have the opportunity to talk to Cindy, who is here today with the chairman of the board of the museum, Katie Stice. So Katie, and Cindy, would you like to step forward to the microphone and answer any questions that the council might have?
Sure. Honorable Mayor Hobart, Mayor Pro Tem Wile, all city council members, city staff, and all guests here today and virtually, thank you so much, first of all, for your partnership, City of Rancho Mirage, and everything you've done for the museum in the past and our anticipated involvement with you in the exciting future of the museum. I'm thrilled to be part of it and to help lead this time of uncertainty, but we're certain that we are destined for great things at the museum. So thank you so much for everything you've done thus far. And if anyone has questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Cindy, I have one question. I understand that you're now driving the Volkswagen that was there.
I am, yes, as a matter of fact. I repainted it.
I think that's great advertising. Just kidding. For those who don't know which Volkswagen we're talking about, we're talking about the one that has 120 layers of dabs of paint on it, not to mention a dent or two.
Luckily, I'm a good driver. Any other questions?
Thank you very much for coming. If there are no questions. Does anybody have a question for Cindy? Okay, thank you, Cindy.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Cindy. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Is that your hand up?
That's my hand up.
Yeah, okay.
If no one else wishes to go first?
Go right ahead, Iris.
Okay. Well, first of all, let me just address the speaker that just spoke in regard to my position in regard to the STRs, because he mentioned my discussion with Charlie and Isaiah, which took place two days after the assignment of the subcommittee. And that was primarily the preliminary discussion with Isaiah regarding the problems and the situations with the city STRs. Charlie and I took another almost three weeks to discuss and investigate throughout the county, the Coachella Valley, and the state, all the STRs that we could investigate, including some of the information that was brought forth by me in regard to internet information with the STRs in New York City. So that is what was the situation, because the STRs that we voted on is citywide. Now, all the city council members, I would imagine, live somewhere near an STR. So that's why we were all qualified to vote on the STRs. When it comes to the project he mentioned, that I was recusing myself because it was within 500 feet of my house, that is correct. It was within 500 feet of my house, and that is why I recused myself. So I wanted to thank him for his comments, but I wanted to clarify exactly what he said and what was actually meant. So moving on to my other comments, though, I would just like to welcome everyone this afternoon, and I'd like to say a few words regarding the many comments I have recently received. And I will start off by saying that we are living in very precarious times. It's precarious times for our economy. It's precarious with the pandemic. It's precarious with politics. And it's certainly precarious with all the anger we're experiencing in our country. And I mention all this because recently, there's been a lot of accusatory words and false allegations being heard in these chambers. And even if allegations are proven false and formal apologies are issued, the words and the false allegations are still offensive and have been sometimes abusive. Over the last several years, many of our citizenry and colleagues from other cities have said, "You are such a special city in Rancho Mirage. Why don't you respond to the false and offensive accusations and allegations?" And my answer is that we welcome everyone at our podium. And speakers are welcome to say almost anything on any subject. And it usually serves no purpose to respond, because we are not here to debate issues. We are here to listen. However, it does serve a purpose to correct misstatements and falsehoods, because some speakers are either ill-informed or uninformed. Speakers come to the podium for a variety of reasons. Sometimes they want to speak about making suggestions, which of course, we always appreciate. Sometimes they come to air their concerns or complain about an issue, and we are here to listen. Sometimes speakers are planning to run for council and want to draw attention to their campaign. And sometimes speakers make statements that are not true or inaccurate. And that's when we, as city leaders, need to correct the record and state the true facts. One such speaker has recently been very visible and outspoken at our podium with misinformation and several false accusations. I won't go through them, but fortunately, the actual facts were subsequently revealed, some by me and some by someone who actually participated in the issue which the speaker brought forth. And so the record was ultimately corrected. The speaker also said that the 50 people employed at In-N-Out Burger would not be from Rancho Mirage. And that is no doubt true. But can you imagine how outlandish it would be if all of our businesses were forced to hire only residents from Rancho Mirage? Additionally, one of the most outrageous statements was made by another speaker, and that was that we are accommodating a corporate bully by approving the installation of In-N-Out. It's amazing how that bully word keeps cropping up and keeps getting mentioned here in our chambers. So my question is, do these speakers really think we bully or are bullied by all these big corporations who reside in our wonderful city of Rancho Mirage? Do they think that corporations like Eisenhower Medical Center, the Omni Hotel, the Westin Hotel, or the Ritz-Carlton Hotel are bullied to be in our city? Do they think that corporations like Ferrari and Range Rover and Bentley and Rolls-Royce and Audi, corporations like McDonald's and CVS Pharmacy, Home Depot, Starbucks, and the Cheesecake Factory, do they think that they are bullied by us to be in our city, or they bully us to get into our city? So if that is what they really think, please let me reassure them that we do not bully anyone, nor any corporation, and they certainly do not bully us. Every business in Rancho Mirage is here because they want to be here, and we are honored that they have chosen Rancho Mirage in which to do their business. And in case you were wondering, we do not favor, nor are we held accountable to any special interest groups. And no business has ever muscled their way into Rancho Mirage. So in closing, let me just say, some people may not like what we, as a council, or our staff members, or our commissioners do, and that's really okay. Because there are a whole lot of people in the entire Coachella Valley, and especially in Rancho Mirage, who absolutely love what we do, not only for our residents, but for our visitors and for our businesses. We are an amazing city. We are forward-thinking. We are a beautiful city. Our history and our very careful economic growth proves it. And we, and our city staff, and all our commissioners, work toward one goal, and that is to provide only the very best of everything in our power to our businesses and to the 18,000 to 35,000 people who either reside in Rancho Mirage or who come to visit here every year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Iris. Anyone else like to make a comment?
Yes, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Richard for the update on the Children's Discovery Museum. I've had a lot of questions about it. I think it's great. Thank you, Katie. We welcome the new director. And we look forward to the success of the Children's Museum. It's a great asset, and we're thrilled to have it in our city. And I'd also merely like to mention, Mayor, that on your behalf, I have the privilege of presenting a proclamation signed by you honoring Martin Luther King holiday on Sunday. Rancho Mirage was represented along with the other eight cities in the valley. We paid our respect and recognized the day. So thank you. It was a wonderful event, obviously done via Zoom. Those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Anything else? I have one comment. I wanted to read a letter that I received yesterday from a gentleman by the name of Wyn Block. Dear City of Rancho Mirage, I am a grateful recipient of the Great Plates Program. I just wanted to thank you more than I could say for providing this for us. When I say that it hasn't been a lifesaver, when I say that it has been a lifesaver for me and my service citizens' friends, that is not an exaggeration. You truly might have saved our lives from the pandemic. God bless you. Wayne Block. Thank you, Wayne, for a lovely letter. Okay, we'll move on now to city manager comments. Isaiah?
None today, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Christie, can we have a- Okay, uh, Christie, do we have a motion on the minutes? Or can we have you get us a motion on the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the minutes from the January ninth, or January seventh meeting be approved.
I'll second that.
On a roll call, um, Richard?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. And we'll move on now to the consent calendar. Isaiah, would you take over?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, you have five items on your consent calendar for consideration today. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is the adoption of ordinance 1175, second reading, amending the text of Title 17 zoning to permit fast food restaurants in large-scale shopping centers in certain commercial districts. Item number three is adoption of ordinance number 1176, second reading, approving the statutory development agreement by and between the City of Rancho Mirage and In-N-Out Burgers. Item number four are contracts, item number five are the demands. And before we go to the council, uh, if any member of the public would like to speak on any of these five items, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would hit the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. Before we go to the remote audience, is there anyone here in person that would like to speak on the consent calendar? Seeing none, we will move back to our remote audience, and Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Hi, yes, Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage, uh, uh, item, I'm gonna, if it's okay, I'd like to speak on two and three, I'll keep it brief. Uh, I'm, I'm opposed to the conditional zoning map, uh, I guess, uh, I can't think of the word to use, that, uh, the rechan, or changing of the zoning for this development of In-N-Out and the development agreement, which is item number three. Uh, as the Iris, I guess, spoke earlier about this um, issue of the In-N-Out and how, how they're not bullied by corporate entities and so forth. And, and uh, it, it appears, uh, wow. I know the city does bully and, and it's vindictive on certain aspects, uh, to certain residents. And, and it's centered around this development. Uh, but uh, I read the other day that there was a rebranding of the city somehow, so I'm sure this all plays into that, but uh, as, as stands, I'm, I'm definitely opposed to item two and three. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, seeing no one else that wants to speak on this item, we'll close the public comment period, and I'll turn it over to the council.
Uh, let me say that I will abstain on item number three. Is there a motion to approve one, two, four, and five?
Yes, I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar as read.
And I'll second that.
With the abstention noted.
Yes, with the exclusion of item three.
Okay. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
And motion carries four zero with Mayor Hobart abstained.
Hobart abstaining only on item number three.
On item number three.
So, so
And other than that, Hobart votes aye.
Yeah, so for, for the record, um, uh, Councilmember Townsend's motion was on to approve the entire consent calendar. That was seconded by Mayor Protem Wile. And uh, Mayor Hobart abstained from item number three, uh, voting yes on items one, two, four, and five.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, that's the consent calendar. Uh, we will now uh, move on to our public hearings. Uh, so item number six on the agenda is extension of time, case number 2XTPM 20-0001, a two-year extension of time for tentative parcel map number 37003, and the associated preliminary development plan case number PDP 17002 uh, for the development of 12 medical office buildings on the west side of Monterey Avenue. Mina, you're doing this presentation, go ahead.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city council members. The following request is for a two-year extension of time for the development of a medical office complex, case number 2XTPM 200001, known as the Monterey Medical Center. The original project was approved in 2017, and this is their second extension of time request. While staff would typically support a one-year extension, in this case, we believe the recommended two-year extension is appropriate due to the financial hardships of the pandemic and unstable market conditions. The existing conditions may continue well into next year, and the applicant will need to come back and apply for a third extension of time request, which would demand the same approval process. If the city council approves this two-year request, the applicant would have exercised their extension allowance, and the project would not come back for another extension of time request. If approved, the project would have a new expiration date of September 17th, 2022. The subject site is located on the west side of Monterey Avenue, about 1,300 feet north of Gerald Ford Drive. Two parcels will be merged to form one nine-acre parcel. The site will feature 12 medical office buildings with a total square footage of 75,000 square feet. The tentative parcel map accompanying the preliminary development plan is for the consolidation of two parcels to form one nine-acre parcel and the establishment of 12 condominium units. Each individual building will then be able to be sold independently. The office buildings have been arranged in a grid pattern and have been designed as a series of clusters at the interior of the site and standalone buildings facing Monterey Avenue. Access will be provided from the north and south sides of the property. The color palette for the office buildings incorporates varying earth tones, which blend together to create a desert-appropriate contemporary design. Accents to the proposed buildings include glazing, fiber, fiber cement wall paneling in varying colors, and the use of metal fascia in multiple elevations. All of the proposed buildings are 20 feet in height. Here we show a few of the proposed elevations to help visualize the proposed development. The elevations for all of the buildings have been provided in the exhibit booklet on file with the planning division. Staff has not received any outside correspondence regarding this project and recommends that the city council approve a two-year extension of time for the project. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to address any questions.
Thank you, Mina. Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing. Uh, if any member of the public would like to make a comment on this item, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would hit the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. Uh, before we go to our remote audience, is there anyone here in person that would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing no one here in person, we will go to our remote audience. All right, seeing no one in the remote audience either, we will close the public hearing, and I will turn this over to the council.
Do we have a motion on this, please?
Yes, I will make a motion that the council consideration of a two-year extension of time for tentative parcel map 37003, 2XTPM 20-001, and the associated preliminary development plan PDP 17002 for the development of 12 medical office buildings. This is the second request for the extension of time for tentative parcel map 37003 and preliminary development plan 17002, Monterey Medical Center.
Thank you, uh, Christie, would you take a roll call?
We need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, Christie, please do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Christie. We will now move on to item number seven on our agenda, which is extension of time, case number ET 20-003, one-year extension of time for conditional use permit, case number CUP 19004, Annenberg Solar Farm. Uh, Ben, go ahead and take it away.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. Extension of time, case number ET 20-003, is a request from Onyx Development Group for a one-year time extension for the Annenberg Solar Farm project. The project was approved on November 7th, 2019 by the city council, and it had a one-year expiration date, which was set to expire November 7th, uh, 2020. The applicant filed a time extension request 30 days before the expiration date um, to request a one-year, one-year time extension due to the impacts caused by the COVID-19 pandemic and changes in the time of use utility rates. The applicant um, filed the extension to have some additional time to work through these issues. Uh, the project site is located approximately 250 feet east from the intersection of La Paz Road and Los Reyes Drive within the very low-density residential zone. The project is currently located on two parcels totaling 37.5 acres, which are conditioned to either be merged or require a lotline adjustment. The combined area of these parcels is shown in red on the map. The project is situated on the northern portion of these parcels and occupies approximately 6.66 acres. This area is shown in purple. Uh, surrounding uses include the Annenberg Sunnylands Estate to the north and vacant land to the south, west, and east of, from the project site. The closest residence is located approximately 250 feet west from the project site. Um, the solar farm will consist of a 1-megawatt photovoltaic system utilizing approximately 2,888 panels. This will be surrounded by a landscape berm to screen the solar farm from neighboring residences and Frank Sinatra Drive. Landscaping proposed for the berm will consist of desert lavender, creosote bush, and other native shrubs to blend in with the surrounding vegetation. Uh, the solar panels will have a maximum height of eight feet when angled, and will be properly screened by the landscape berm. Primary ingress and ingress to the project site will be located on the northwest corner through a gated access point. Uh, the solar panels will be located approximately 350 feet from the nearest residence to the west, and Frank Sinatra Drive is located approximately 900 feet south of the project site. Uh, the planning commission reviewed this project at their December 10th, 2020 meeting. And at this time, the planning commission recommends that the city council approve a one-year extension of time for conditional use permit, case number CUP 19004, subject to the conditions of approval and based on the findings and content in the staff report. That concludes staff's presentation, and staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Anybody have any questions for staff or others?
So before we go to council comments, Mr. Mayor, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. Uh, so if any member of the public would like to make a comment on this item, now is the time to do so. Uh, if you are participating remotely, you would hit the raise hand button on Zoom and star nine on your telephone. Uh, before we go to our remote audience, anyone here in person that would like to make a comment on this item? Seeing no one here in person, uh, we will, we do have, it just says MSA Consulting. Uh, go ahead.
Hmm. Good afternoon, Mayor Hobart and members of the city council. Christopher Briesweiler here with MSA Consulting. I'm uh, the planner on this project, representing the applicant. Just wanted to say thanks to Ben for the thorough presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, seeing no one else that wants to make a comment on this item, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll turn this over to the city council.
Does anyone have any comment they'd like to make?
No, Mayor, I'll make, uh, I'll make a motion that the city council approve a one-year extension of time for conditional use permit, case number CUP 19004, subject to the conditions of approval and based on the findings and content in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Who was the second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
All right, Christie, go ahead and take the vote.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Christie. Uh, we will now move on to item number eight, which is resolution number 2021, next in order, Designating the Residential Home Located at 71360 Cypress Drive, Rancho Mirage, California, a Historic Resource. This is Historic Preservation Case Number HP 20002. And Ben, you're on deck again, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman. A good afternoon again, Mayor and members of the city council. Uh, the item before you is a request from Ms. Martha Ormsby requesting historic resource designation for her residence located at 71360 Cypress Drive. Uh, the 3,867-square-foot residence is situated overlooking the 15th fairway of the Thunderbird Country Club, as shown here in red on the map. Uh, the single-story residence was built in 1954 and was designed by architect Archibald Quincy Jones, who also worked on the Sunnylands Estate. Um, the residence is architecturally significant for its portrayal of the mid-century modern architectural style. The home is not included in the city's Historic Resources Survey, but a detailed historic report was prepared for the residence, which was included in your agenda packet. Um, the aerial image here is from 1957, which was three years after the home's construction. Uh, the residence is shown in red, and the Thunderbird Country Club and nearby scattered residences are also visible. The home has gone through various ownership changes throughout the years. It was originally built for Ms. Margaret Lester, who was heir to the Cyclops Cosmetics Fortune. In the late 1960s, the home was sold to our, um, actor Arthur Lake, who was married to actress Patricia Van Cleve. Uh, the current owners of the home purchased the property in 2010. Uh, from Cypress Drive along the home's frontage, the house has a simple sloping roof design with a central recessed front door. Exteriors along the east elevation are primarily smooth stucco, and exposed beams are located at the eaves. Along the rear elevation overlooking the Thunderbird Country Club golf course, the home continues its sloping shed roof design. Exposed beams at the eaves supporting the home's deep overhangs are a prominent design feature. And um, milched corner glass along with floor-to-ceiling glass are exclusively located along this elevation. The image from 1954 at the bottom right shows that the home's current elevations are nearly identical, uh, with the exception of the fireplace, which was modified but um, located within its original location. Here we have the home's west elevation. Uh, various mid-century modern design features previously discussed are also present along this. And a close-up view of the home's exposed beams are provided. Um, this is an original floor plan, which confirms Archibald Quincy Jones was the architect for the residence. Um, the Historic Preservation Commission was provided the option to either tour the property on an individual basis or to virtually tour the property through photos and photographs um, provided by staff. At the November 18th, um, 2020 Historic Preservation Commission meeting, the commission agreed that the residence met the requirements for designation and unanimously voted to recommend designation. The homeowners have done an excellent job in restoring and maintaining key aspects of the home to showcase its iconic mid-century modern design. And at this times, at this time, staff is recommending that the city council adopt resolution next in order Designating the Residential Home Located at 71360 Cypress Lane, Rancho Mirage, California, a Historic Resource. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff and um, staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. If any member of the public would like to speak on this item, now is the time. If you are participating remotely, you would hit star nine on your telephone or the raised hand button on Zoom. Before we go to our remote audience, is there anyone here in person that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one here uh, in person, we will go to our remote audience. Seeing no one remotely either, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll turn this over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Does any member... Mr. Mayor, I just have one comment. Surely. Ben, you did a great job in putting this report together. Whoever acquired all the historic information really did a great job, and you should be commended on your in-depth research on this property. Which...
Also, Ben, I want to say that, as I'm reading this, that the home is pretty much in original condition, which is very rare. Very little has been changed with it, other than keeping it in prime condition. Is that correct?
Yes, other than the fireplace that was modified but still retained its original location, it's mostly in original condition.
Very good. Are there any other homes on the block in the report that are eligible for the same designation?
I don't believe the area on Cypress Drive was included in the city's Historic Resources Survey, since it was a gated area. That's probably the reason why this home wasn't included in the survey, but other homes that do want to potentially go through the historic designation process would have to provide their own Historic Resources Survey by a Historic Preservation Professional for us to consider the home's designation. But...
Very good. That's a very good explanation of why it was omitted, because it was behind gates. And when the survey was done, many of the gated communities in Ranch Mirage were not included in that report. This, everybody knows it. It wasn't done deliberately or because we didn't want to do it. That's the way it was done at that time. So anybody behind gates think they can apply for this are more than welcome to apply to the commission. Thank you.
Any other comments? Is there a motion then to designate this a historic resource?
Mr. Mayor, that motion that I would move that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 2021, Next in Order, Designating the Residential Home Located at 71360 Cypress Drive, Ranch Mirage, California, Accessor Parcel Number 684-040-005, a Historic Resource.
Second.
And we have a vote.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we go on, I would just like to make a comment, since we've already taken the vote, that this is a remarkable history of this home that is presented in this report. And I was hoping that sometime in the next future, when we have a Modernism Week and we have lectures at the library, perhaps this home can be included because of the history with Patricia Lake and the connection to William Randolph Hearst and Marion Davies. I think that would be very interesting, and to have a home of that kind of historic value is quite remarkable. So that's all my comments.
Sounds like a good idea.
Thank you.
Okay. See where we just left off, Brad. Going on to item number nine. Isaiah?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the consideration of approving a gift agreement to accept an art donation to the Ranch Mirage Library and Observatory Foundation, and this will be handled by Aaron. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. Let me share this screen here. All right. Today, staff is requesting that the Board of Directors of the City of Ranch Mirage Library and Observatory adopt the attached Resolution Number 20... Number 2021, Next in Order, consisting of, number one, consenting the Ranch Mirage Library and Observatory Foundation's acceptance of the Chihuli sculpture; two, approval of the gift agreement; and three, authorizing its executive director to execute the same agreement. The Ranch Mirage Library and Observatory has been and continues to grow into the cultural center of the Coachella Valley. It is known as one of the state's best libraries for our library collection, our award-winning library programming, our research-grade observatory intended for public outreach, the personal library of President Gerald and Betty Ford from their home in Ranch Mirage, and the one-of-a-kind Roberson mineral collection. The importance of our facility continues to garner the attention of many, including Lorraine Fair, who has offered to donate a piece named the Persian Tower. Let's take a look at this exquisite piece of art. The Persian Tower is 32 pieces of blown glass, as well as a steel base sculpted and named by Dale Chihuli. The Persian Tower's main piece is 10 feet tall, 3 feet in depth, and 4 feet in length. The tower portion is made up of 22 individual glass Persians, as well as a steel base. There's an additional 10 Persians that were added to the tower in an effort to help with the flow of the piece in the Fair's residence. The authenticity has been verified by Imagio Galleries in Palm Desert and in its capacity as a representative of Dale Chihuli and the seller of the artwork to Donald and Lorraine Fair. Let's take a closer look. The use of ribbed opex molds is essential for the aesthetics of the Persians. Molten glass ringed by linear wraps is plunged into these molds to create repetitive patterns. When blown out, the bubbles are transformed into swirling irregularly shaped rondelles with fascinating detail. For Chihuli, Persians started out as an exploration of form, shape, and color, a celebration of wild asymmetry with swirling pattern. Chihuli describes Persians by stating, "I want people to be overwhelmed with the light and color in some way that they have never experienced." Chihuli is considered worldwide as a premier glassblower of our time. Since the late 1960s, Dale Chihuli has been revolutionizing the art and craft of glassblowing, concocting dynamic, flamboyant, colored, saturated forms that push this ambiguous material far beyond utilitarian ends, including his signature chandeliers. Chihuli's work can be viewed worldwide, but even as close as our desert. His works can be seen at Imagio Gallery off of Highway 74, at our very own Eisenhower Health, as well as the Bellagio Hotel in Las Vegas, and as far as London, England. I would like to take a moment to thank the Fair family for thinking of the Ranch Mirage Library and Observatory with such a unique gift. Due to prior obligations, the family could not attend virtually today, but I have had the opportunity to speak with Ms. Fair's daughter, Michelle, and she wanted to express her family's gratitude to the City Council for their consideration of accepting and displaying the art piece in the library. On the screen, you can see a photo of Donald and Lorraine Fair in their home in La Quinta back in 2014. If approved today, the intention is to add this beautiful piece of art to the Special Collections Room, along with the Gerald and Betty Ford Collection and the Joe and Gigi Roberson Mineral Collection. Already special to the library and the city, this addition would add to the allure. The gift agreement also provides that the donor will convey to the foundation simply absolute title to the artwork by deed of gift. The gift is also restricted, as it comes with a 90-day written consent to the proposed movement and disposition of the artwork. The fiscal impact to the library to acquire and display the artwork would cost approximately $12,450, with no budget adjustments needed. The Subcommittee of Mayor Hobart and Councilman Wile met, discussed, and support the approval of accepting the artwork. This concludes my presentation, and I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Aaron, for that presentation. Hopefully, we don't lose you to an art gallery. Before we go to the council, if... Let's go ahead and open up the public comment period on this item. If any member of the public would like to speak on this item, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would hit the Raise Hand button on Zoom or *9 on your telephone before we go to our remote audience. Is there anyone here in person that would like to make a comment on this item? Seeing none, we will go to our remote audience. Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Yes, hi. Brad Anderson, City Ranch Mirage. I know this was agenda item number nine, I guess, but I was concerned, because I did contact City Hall, and it wasn't placed on agenda in a timely manner. Actually, I don't know when you did it, but it wasn't in the 72-hour timeframe. And my concerns was that I just had a brief area or time to research this, and I'm sure I'm not the only one, I would think, but maybe I am. But anyway, I would hope that maybe you can continue this to the next meeting, but I know you won't. So anyway, I'll just speak briefly on it. What information I found was, yes, it's a gorgeous piece, and I think the city would be very lucky and honored to receive it and place it and display it. But also, I'm under the impression that the foundation was not accepting any donated... any donations at all. And for this piece to get recognition is... I'm going to use the word suspicious again. Again, I haven't detailed all the information on this because of the timeframe that it was not available to me. And we had a... Apparently, had a Subcommittee of the Mayor and one of the other City Council members, and I can't find any information concerning that. Why would you have a Subcommittee of the Foundation Directors? So it's interesting. And again, you have the $12,000, but that's well within your budget to do for a placement and display purposes. But again, yeah, I just... I don't... This is still... I think the placement itself may be in line with advertising this artist and his pieces. And I've sat in meetings with the city, with the director of the library, and it does come down to financial issues, and the highest price issues normally get the respect of the council or the board. So I would hope that's not the case, but I think it is. So I don't have anything else nice to say, so I'm going to not say anything. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no one else that would like to speak on this item, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period. And before I return it to the council, just to clarify, this item was properly posted on our agenda, since the agenda was released on January 15, well advanced of the 72-hour rule. So this item did originally appear on the agenda. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Would anybody like to make any comment about the issue before us?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Thank you. Is there a time limit on the gift, like 20 years, 10 years? Also, is there a stipulation that the foundation owns it outright and clear? And can the foundation sell or dispose of this item at any time? There's my question.
Aaron, you want to take that one?
Yes. Okay. I'm sorry. I was looking at my notes. So we do have the fee simple... the deed gift. So it is a gift to the foundation, but there is a restriction of a 90-day written consent if we want to move or sell the item. And that comes from the family and their heirs moving forward. There is no time limit, so this gift is being given to the foundation with that restriction.
So, Aaron, at any time, we have to go to them for permission to move it or sell it? Is that correct?
That is based on how the agreement was written, yes.
And is that in perpetuity?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Aaron, I also have a question. There is a need for a donor approval for any proposed changes. Who would be the person or the entity that would be giving their approval, say, 10, 20, 30 years down the line?
That would be the heirs and the trust of Ms. Fair.
Okay. Is there a particular group of heirs that would be in line for their approval? My concern is that 20 or 30 years from now... Sometimes it's hard to track down heirs. You know, you never know if someone is going to end up in India in an ashram. And sometimes getting the approval when there are a variety of heirs, especially where they might be in different locations, how would that be handled?
I would...
My guess is, and Steve is here, but my guess is that if you made a reasonable effort, maybe an extraordinary effort, to locate an heir so as to secure approval for whatever we're talking about, that's all you have to do. But you'd have to show good faith in the effort.
Okay. So my question is, is that going to be included in the agreement that a reasonable effort would be all that's needed? And that if no heirs could be found for their approval, that we could go ahead with our intention or proposed intentions?
I think the contract, the agreement, already subsumes that. It's part of it, express or implicit.
Well, there's also... This is Steve Q, the city attorney. Or also, public art that's donated to a public agency is also governed by state law. And so the state law provides... There are provisions in the state law that, you know, set forth what we have to do when we cannot track down heirs. So I'll take a look at that and make sure that that is included in the contract. Typically, in situations where we are required as a public agency to track down heirs, to, you know, make a change to something that was donated to the city, there's a publication requirement. So if we're not able to contact someone, there are typically provisions that require us to post something or publish something in a newspaper of general circulation. And if there's no response, then at that point, we can do basically whatever we want to do with the piece that was donated.
Okay.
Yeah, so...
Okay.
So first and foremost, we'll have to follow those rules.
Okay.
Aaron, is he done?
But those are good questions. Those are good questions to ask, because I've seen a lot of agencies that have accepted public art not knowing that there is an obligation to... Before you move public art, before you change it, before you sell it, there's a process that's set forth in state law that we have to follow.
Exactly. And because they are essentially our partners in this, you know, it's something that we kind of need to at least be aware of. And is there a timeframe where... When things are published and a notification is put out there that the heirs or whomever would be in charge of this would have 30 or 60 or 90 days to get back to us?
Yes, there is a timeframe. I'm not... I can't tell you off the top of my head what that timeframe is, but there is typically a timeframe. Usually, what I see in other areas of law regarding donations of property, it's typically a 90-day time period after they publish something. And then there's also the process of... Another process we can go through by, you know, filing, you know, filing something with the courts to determine that, you know, something's been abandoned.
Okay.
Typically, the publication is sufficient.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. How much is this piece valued at? Was it a quarter of a million dollars or $250,000? Or what is also the insurance? Is covered by the umbrella coverage at City Library? Or do we have to take out a special policy on this piece? And what happens if there's an earthquake or somebody smashes into it? Who is responsible, and how would that happen, if it be handled?
So let me tackle that first question first. So the perceived value of it right now is about $275,000. This piece was purchased in multiple phases. So the main tower was purchased in 2002 for the approximately $200,000. The addition of those other pieces was about $75,000. As part of this gift agreement, the donor will pay for the appraisal so that the proper tax documents can be provided. In regards to the insurance, the insurance... The art piece is already covered or would be covered under the city's policy, and it would be the responsibility of the city.
So there would not be a separate insurance policy for this, correct?
That is my understanding correct. That is my understanding correct.
And who is paying for the dismantling and remantling of this in the library, aside from the twelve thousand dollar quote of putting a glass frame around it?
The twelve thousand dollars is actually inclusive of the dismantling, the transportation, and the re, uh, assembly of the artwork. So the display is approximately five to seven thousand dollars. The remaining cost is the actual, uh, disassembly, the transportation and the reassembly of that. And that would be coming out of the library's fund.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Yeah. Let me say this. Charlie, those were our concerns as well.
I'm sure.
Uh, when we asked about the insurance, uh, the valuation, um, all of the things, all of those concerns, timeframe, in the event the heirs were not available and so forth, those are the questions that, that we inquired about as well. I will say this, that Aaron has done a magnificent job in discussing this and frankly, getting the confidence of the donor to such a valuable piece to the library. It's not every day that we have the opportunity to have a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar work of art, uh, available, uh, in our library. It's a magnificent piece. Uh, as one of the pictures showed, uh, earlier by Aaron, if you ever drive up Highway seventy-four and you look in the window of Maggio Gallery, see that yellow chandelier? It's kind of a benchmark there on, uh, in Palm Desert on Highway seventy-four. So this is a wonderful opportunity. Um, and to think that it will go, go into a room where we have, again, a mineral collection, um, worth many hundreds of thousands of dollars. We have President Ford's, um, collection. And to add the, have the opportunity of adding a Chalouli, uh, is quite remarkable. So we're, I think we're quite thrilled and, and Aaron, again, um, our hats off to you for making the arrangements and negotiating such an excellent agreement. So thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
What a great opportunity for our city to add to our collections. There's nothing else like this in the valley, but maybe in the whole, all of Southern California to have such a diverse collection as we have. And I'm sure by acquiring, uh, the glass, we will see more and more people come to us with various opportunities for us to show their artwork or other collectibles. So great job, uh, everybody that's involved in the acquisition of this property.
As we've noticed, Aaron, uh, everyone has some concern, you know, about what happens if, uh, something happens to the piece, uh, from an insurance perspective especially. Uh, I would suggest that we also retain, uh, an expert in, in certain types of rare materials and products, uh, to see, uh, that we've got all the bases covered so that we don't end up having left out or not seen, uh, an exception, uh, carved into it somewhere. So a, a separate, uh, review of the insurance would be something I think would be extremely helpful. It doesn't slow, it doesn't slow us down, does it?
Yeah, we will.
Dana, I agree with you. And the reason that I brought it up is I had purchased three Jehuli's chandeliers in New York and they had the store in Rancho Mirage. One was sent to Las Vegas home, one went to Chicago, and one went right here to Palm Springs. And I tell you, I had to take out personally an insurance policy for the delivery of taking those chandeliers down in my store and delivering them and installing them in the homes of the people that purchased it. That's the only reason that I'm aware of that and of how delicate these situations can be. So I agree with you. There should be a separate policy taken out.
The thing, the thing that I worry about, and you, you've touched on it, is, uh, we wanna have it fully insured, but we do not wanna be insurers of the product.
Right.
My distinction, we don't wanna be in the position of there being some open bases that are, um, uh, not covered by our policy or the policy we get. So that's why I think it's really extremely important to have, uh, serious expertise, uh, added to our review to make sure we've got all the holes plugged and don't end up, uh, down the line. Some years now wishing we hadn't, uh, opted favorably on this, this fantastic item.
No, Dana, I agree with you. And I'm uncomfortable with having the statement that we have a policy that covers the library. That's like having a homeowner's policy on the house, but when the refrigerator breaks, it's not in that policy. So having something like two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar fragile piece under an umbrella policy, I think is pretty loose. So I agree with you that it should be looked at if we approve this and a separate policy be attached to it, period.
Isaiah, do we know whether, uh, an insurance company, uh, has been involved with this product for a while with the owners? And have we, um, discussed with the owners, uh, some of the, um, arguments that can be made with respect to what our role is or was?
Uh, so yes, we did have specific conversations with this piece with our, uh, insurance provider, PERMA. Uh, the city carries a very comprehensive insurance policy, numerous insurance policies with PERMA. This is not our first, um, item that is of high value within the library. Uh, but staff will take council comments and we will perform another special review for this item to make sure it's appropriately covered.
Okay. One, one thing that, uh, keeps popping into my mind is, uh, the figure, uh, whatever it is, how many hundred? Seven hundred and fifty thousand or whatever? No, yeah.
Two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five. Uh, is that figure, um, an agreed-upon figure? Uh, when was that figure?
That, that was just, that was just the cost to purchase, uh, the original art piece.
That's ten, twenty years ago, isn't it?
Yeah. So, so as we mentioned, there will be an appraisal, and so we will have the value with that appraisal.
Okay.
Mayor, I would, uh, I would suggest, um, that subject to us being satisfied that we're properly covered from an insurance standpoint, uh, that I would make a motion that the, uh, City of Rancho Mirage and Observatory adopt the attached Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-One next in order. One, consenting to Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory, Foundation's acceptance of a Chalouli sculpture. And two, approving the gift agreement. And three, authorizing its executive director to execute the same agreement.
Second, the motion. Isaiah, can you think of anything else that should be added to it?
Uh, no, I think we are well covered. I appreciate the, um, comments and we will, uh, work with our insurance provider to make sure it is appropriately covered and it'll be a wonderful piece on display in a public library.
Right. And, uh, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, just wanna clarify that we're gonna own this piece. It's, it's not on loan. We are gonna own it. We just, the state law just requires us to provide notice to the artists, with the owners or the heirs, in the event we wanna move it or sell it. But we actually, the city will actually own it.
So we wouldn't have to cover, um, if, if a chip occurred or a mud break occurred, we wouldn't?
We wouldn't be, uh, financially responsible, liable for that.
To, to fix it. All right.
Or, or to pay, Steve, or to pay two hundred and seventy-five thousand to the family. We own it?
We own it. Yeah. We're only required to seek their permission if we want to sell it or we wanna move it.
Let me ask you that. Why, if we own it, do we have to ask for permission?
State law. The state law has some, um, there's some, it's a public art state law. But we will have fee title to the.
We, we're also agreeing to that, council member, within the gift agreement. So the, the family would like to, uh, their desire to know where it's at, uh, is what prompted them to put that provision into the gift agreement.
I get you. Thank you. Well, we're learning a lot today about gift giving, aren't we? There's a lot that goes to it. Thank you.
That's because you have good questions.
All right. We, we've had a motion and a second. Christie, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Thank you, Christie. We will now move on to item number ten on the agenda. Uh, this is the consideration of approving a ten thousand dollar donation to the Coachella Valley Generalism Foundation in support of a full-time opinion editor at the Desert Sun. And I will handle this presentation. Uh, so during our, uh, last council meeting, uh, Mayor Hobart raised this topic and requested that it be on today's agenda. Uh, so after the meeting, I followed up with, uh, Mayor Hobart and, uh, got his, uh, recommendation that he wanted to present to the city council. So within the staff report, um, staff, uh, quickly summarized, uh, really a, uh, Valley voice, uh, from Joe Wallace. And we also attached that Valley voice to our staff report. And, uh, you know, we've, we've all seen, um, the financial struggles of, uh, newspapers and really that industry as a whole. And, uh, so the Desert Sun is a valuable resource here locally, uh, for the Coachella Valley. Uh, and so there is a newly formed nonprofit, uh, that is taking this mission on to try to, uh, fund this opinion editor at, uh, the Desert Sun so that we can keep the opinion column alive and well here in the Coachella Valley. Uh, so these funds, uh, if approved by the council, uh, they would be donor restricted for this purpose of funding this full-time professional, uh, opinion editor at the Desert Sun. If for any reason, um, this nonprofit could not follow through with that, these funds would be restricted specifically for that purpose as part of, uh, the donation. Uh, with that, um, I will, uh, conclude my, uh, staff report and we'll go ahead and open up the public comment period. Uh, so if any member of the public would like to speak on this item, now is the time to do so. Uh, you would hit the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone before we go to our remote audience. Uh, is anyone here in person wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, uh, here in person, we'll move to our remote audience. And Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage. Uh, yes, I was at the last meeting, uh, where I heard Mr. Hobart to the mayor at the time, I guess he is to the mayor, uh, make a comment of supporting the Desert Sun or apparently the opinion portion of it. Uh, and I did see the staff report and I did try to go to that website and believe it or not, I was unable to do that. And so I couldn't find any information concerning this. Probably, uh, probably, like you said, it's a newly, uh, funded or really, uh, established nonprofit. But either way, I would be opposed to this. Uh, yes, uh, be, this mainly because we're talking about a private company. And of course, the mayor has made a lot of opinion pieces before the Desert Sun. And of course, that, uh, would be not readily available to him now. And that's probably not a bad thing. Uh, as a citizen of the city. But, uh, so I, I would say, uh, using tax funds to, to support a nonprofit, to support a private company, uh, I don't wanna use the word suspicious because I use that all the time, but, uh, I don't think it should be, uh, a public domain. Especially, I mean, if they did an opinion piece, they would probably have to, you know, disclose, you know, that it's a government-run operation because, uh, I don't think government should be supporting, uh, uh, the free press. And that's all. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, seeing no one else that wishes to speak, uh, we will close the public comment period on this item. And, uh, Mayor Hobart, I'll return it to you for any comments.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, the Desert Sun has had a couple of articles, uh, concerning what the newspaper will no longer be able to have within its fold. Uh, and, um, it seems to me that our valley is going to be seriously, uh, hurt, oppressed by not having, uh, a newspaper that carries the news of the valley that's, uh, politically oriented. Uh, it points out that, uh, the Valley Voice is, is, uh, the Desert Sun currently publishes one page of opinion, uh, content Monday to Saturday and two pages on Sunday. Uh, they say that they will no longer be printing opinion pieces, um, Valley Voices, um, letters to the editor, uh, all of the contributions that are made by the public. Um, and, uh, contrary to somebody's, um, recent statement, I don't, uh, have anything to gain, uh, or lose by this. I don't think anybody in our council does. I think it's a question of how do you get information out to the public about our campaigns? If we didn't have the Desert Sun, how would we do it? We would rely on each other's paid letters, which everybody will assume is not neutral, each one, not neutral. Uh, to not have something, and this is simply one, one page, uh, the same type of advocacy that the newspaper has been doing ever since we all first came to the valley. Uh, if we can't have somebody criticizing politicians, and nobody's done it more than the newspaper, but nobody's done more of informing the public about what political groups are doing and what issues, uh, are significant at the moment, what the problems with the issues are. Uh, silencing a newspaper is a serious loss if it's not something yours. And, um, I have, I have no more interest in this than, uh, anybody. Uh, the newspaper, uh, the last time, the last time I was interviewed by the newspaper, those of my colleagues who were there would know that I spent my entire two or three-minute closing argument blasting the newspaper's lack of adequate coverage on a couple of subjects. Uh, but the bottom line is, I could talk to them, maybe not make a difference over a period of two years, but, um, over those same years, I can know what's going on in the other valley cities. If, if Indian Wells does something really interesting, how do we find out about it and consider maybe doing it for ourselves? At any rate, that's my, my view is, is that those of us who are interested in elections that are not just bought and paid, if the only thing you get on a subject is information from the candidate, uh, you can be sure that, uh, you're not getting all the information. from the candidate, you can be sure that you're not getting all the information. Whether or not I ever run again has no diff, makes no difference to my view here. I would want my colleagues to be able to have access to information that you absolutely will not have. Incumbents in particular are vulnerable. It's their record they have to run on. And if the newspaper is not there to publish their record, who's going to do it? The opponent, who nobody's going to believe because he has, he or she has a bias? I think it's something that we should seriously consider. And $10,000 is all we would be committing ourselves to. And I personally think you can't have good government without good newspaper and media coverage. And to save a few dollars and give up that tremendous right of the public to know is foolish, in my opinion. That's all I have to say on it, Isaiah.
Dana, I concur with your feelings. I think that we all need an outside entity to hold our seat to the fire. We have all been criticized from time to time, and I think probably praised from time to time. But it's important that there be an outside entity that, that is looking at us and looking at the other cities and how we compare ourselves to other cities. I think it's vitally important. I was frankly saddened when I heard that Al Franco was accepting early retirement. I thought he did a good job.
And he's gone now.
Yes, he has. He is gone. And so when you made the recommendation at the last meeting, I thought it was worthwhile. I think it's, you know, important that we do it. And I would hope, I would hope that, again, fortunately, we're in a city, we are a city, that leads by example. And I'm hoping that us making this first move will be an incentive and an inducement for the other cities to make a contribution to fill this position that, according to Joe Wallace's article, requires a $60,000 salary. I assume that our $10,000 will be held in an account until such funds have been accumulated and reached that goal.
Or if they terminate the whole plan.
Exactly. Then I would, it would probably be returned to us if it was never, if it was never used. So I'm fully in support. I think it's worthwhile. And as I say, I hope by leading by example, we encourage other cities to do the same thing.
I would like to make a statement, if I may.
Really, truly.
Thank you. You know, I've had a 25-year career with the Los Angeles Times in management. And I've seen that newspaper go from a billion dollars a year. Mind you, that's 25 years ago, which would probably double by today if it was still that viable. And I seem to go into bankruptcy. I know that the Desert Sun has sold off the presses, the building is up for sale. And that to date, there are over 1,800 newspapers in the United States that have gone bankrupt and out of business. Unfortunately, this is the times we are living in as everything is going on and we're losing businesses left and right, retail and all over the landmark of retail or whatever it is. First of all, we did not take this away from the Desert Sun, Dana. The Desert Sun is taking it away themselves. In the newspaper business, as I have been with, who major publications, the editorial and the letters to the editor are the backbone of any newspaper. And to see this paper, which has over 100 publications still online and other assets from television to radio to magazines, you say that they're going to pull this for a mere $60,000, really surprises me. Why would they pull, why would they pull that out and then have three, four, five, six, I think I counted today, eight pages of sports? So who, what's wagging the tail here? Yes, I agree with you. Editorial, letters to the editor are very, very important. As I said, they are the backbone of the newspaper business. That's what it was founded on for politics and giving the opinions of people. That's the mantra of the paper. And also reading today in the paper, they just hired a brand-new editorial person to cover the west end of the valley. How much is that person getting? How is that as important as taking away an editorial in a letters to the editor? In which I'll also say have not been favorable to me, period, in my career of almost seven years here with Rancho Mirage. So I'm not saying this against it, but I'm saying I don't understand why $60,000 to this corporation would be that severe as to either bankrupt it or take away the most important part of that newspaper, is exactly what you're saying, Dana. And then hire somebody to fill in for conversation on three of the cities in the west valley. To me, I don't understand it. And also, if they do get the $60,000, that's this year. What about next year? What about next year? In the comment from Brad Anderson, you're dealing with taxpayers' money supporting a newspaper. And then other people would say, well, are you just seeking for favoritism? You say not. They might say, yes, you are. In talking to three other cities, when I brought the subject up, they said, are you serious? I said, well, it's in the paper every day. They run an ad looking for money to save the editorial page. I won't tell you what the answers were from those people. But I hope the passing of the Rancho Mirage pledge, if we do this goal, will help to meet the target and keep the columns and the letters continuing for at least a year. However, I'm sure that after listening to this discussion or whatever they're raising, that they will see the point that'll come back and hit this council right between the eyes of what was said here, even by Brad and by myself as a former newspaper man. It doesn't make sense for $60,000 that they are coming in hat in hand and begging. They have money to put something that should be the first thing, like the headline on the front page as an editorial and letters to the editor. And be it said, against me, for me, for Rancho Mirage, against Rancho Mirage, Indian Wells, whatever it is, they have it there to do. And I agree with you, Dana. But I certainly disagree with this city putting itself forward to give $10,000 or $10 to support something in a newspaper that that is their given right as the fourth estate to have in that paper. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comment? Steve, are you here? Steve Quintanilla?
Yes, he's here, Richard. Go ahead and ask a question.
Yes.
Steve? Hi. Charlie raised an interesting question in his discussion here concerning the funding of an entity like this with government funds. Your opinion on doing something like this? And is it something that the cities should look at? And look maybe at a different way of funding?
Richard, all I can say is that it's entirely within the city council's discretion to decide whether or not to donate to the newspaper for this purpose, provided that the city council believes it's going to serve a legitimate governmental purpose for the city of Rancho Mirage.
So to clarify, the donation is not going to the Desert Sun, it's going to a nonprofit?
Now, so if you, if the city council believes that it serves a legitimate governmental purpose for the city, then you have the discretion to do it or not do it.
Yes, but the nonprofit is also giving it to the Desert Sun to hire the person to write the column. Is that not correct?
Yes.
Well, then it's just a, it's just a circumventing situations and covering something up to guide it a different way. Because if the Desert Sun went themselves to do this, which they do, I've got it right here in front of me, save the Desert Sun opinion pages, right here. Can't read it, but there it is. From the Desert Sun. It's behind the Desert Sun. The organization is behind the Desert Sun to fund this for them. And again, I say, this year, what about next year?
Why don't we let next year be the experience that we've learned from the first year and give it a try? I mean, at the end of one year, we will, we will probably have a pretty good idea as to whether or not it's $10,000 that is wasted money. Not that we've ever wasted $10,000 before. But if, if we have, we'll know it in a year. We'll see, we'll have a discussion as to whether it should be continued. I presume, maybe they won't even raise the money because politicians usually are not pleased with newspapers. Newspapers are not flattering to any of us. But what is flattering is, to me at least, is the concept of letting the public know as much as they can do through a newspaper, let the public know what's going on. Also lets us know what's going on. We see a good idea down in India. We wouldn't, we'll never learn about it if we don't have an organ that carries that kind of information and spreads it across the valley.
Dana, I agree with what you're saying.
I don't see what, what that would hurt.
I agree with what you're saying. And you're saying exactly what I'm saying. And I'm asking you the question. That importance of that paper having the opinion and the letters to the editor, is that important to you, to me, to everybody? Why in God's name would they pull it for $60,000 and then yet hire somebody to, just in the paper today, hire them to cover three cities and have eight pages of sports every day practically?
Let me answer that question.
Let me ask you that.
Let me answer that question this way. In yesterday's paper, there's an article on the editorial page, a full two-column article written by, whoops. I have the wrong piece of paper, but there was a two-column article. Oh, here it is. Yeah. This article in, I said yesterday, January 20th. And it's entitled Fight Against Disinformation Starts at Home. And this fellow writes a complete article talking about the importance of disseminating information.
I read it. I know it. Yes.
He ends with this statement. Investing in good, in more good information in addition to regulating the spread of disinformation will be the key to the future health of our democracy. His name is Karnik Rathman Rathmussen. Is a professor of public policy at the University of California, Riverside. If only, there's no, we lose the right of rebuttal. The newspaper can say what it wants. They don't have to print letters to the editor anymore. Or they don't have to give valley voices anymore. They can say what they want because we have silenced ourselves because we wouldn't put up a few dollars to find out whether or not it can be an effective tool for good government, not hidden government, but good government.
Let me answer you this way. It is not you or me or our $10,000. It is why is it not that important to the Desert Sun to not fund the opinion page, the column that you're talking about in the letters to the editor, for $60,000? Evidently to them, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, evidently them, they don't care. What newspaper would ever, ever say, we're throwing out these two features for $60,000? And you guys, if you want it, you have to pay for it and help us support this every year from now on, as long as that paper's in business.
You're making all that up. There's no obligation for us to do it, even one more year, much less all year.
Thank you. Thank you. I agree. There should be no obligation.
One year is an experiment. Is it good government for the public to be able to have more information? Or is it good government to be able to conceal information from the public?
It's still them doing it. It's not us doing it. And let me just say this about that.
We don't know until we try.
Again, they, they, they are the ones taking it away. Not City of Rancho Mirage, not our $10,000. They have made it a point to take it away, where they had to go to an organization to try to fund it, to give them the money. I find it impossible to think that the Gannett chain, as big as that is, is, maybe it is that the presses are gone, buildings up for sale, that when they look at the bottom line for the Desert Sun, it's not that important to them. But they did hire somebody just this week, as I said, and repeated it again, and have four, five, six, seven, and eight pages of sports in there every day. You know, I wrestle with myself. I had this and I thought, and I've asked other people, and I've been told this. Are you out of your mind bringing this up? Are you really crazy? You're shooting yourself in the foot because you know they will crucify you on this. Or if you run again for that city council, I think I was called an agitator and a person when I was running the last time, twice, which they never supported me either way. So let me say that, if they're thinking about that, and I'm doing sour grapes. I still won, and I won big, with or without them. I'm not saying, I'm saying that as being in that business for 25 years and knowing how holding the fourth estate so upright in this nation, we've seen this in our government with the wrong things being done. So back to where I started with this, and I will say this. Are you crazy for bringing this up? It's only $10,000. To hell with it. Vote yes and let it go. What do you care? Because you're the one that's going to bring this up. Don't do it. And I sat here and I thought, listening to all the campaigns and everything that went through, that we've gone through these last many months, that I really sleep with myself, that I really not share with this, if you want to call it a tirade with you? Am I not man enough to say it's wrong? Am I a puss? Am I a coward to stand here and say, oh, yes, 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 yeah, oh, definitely, we should do this? I made the decision, starting with this meeting, I wasn't going to say a word. I had three pages written to talk about. And I said, no, I'm just going to wing this and see how far my emotions take me with what I feel is right. And there's a lot of other people that feel it right. Because they said, why don't you do it? Why can't you do it? Are you not man enough to give your opinion? So that's all I'm doing here is being man enough, hopefully, honestly, so I can lay my head down tonight. I'm doing here, is being man enough, hopefully, honestly, so I can lay my head down tonight so that I can look at my husband, who said, "I can't believe you would just sit there and go along with the rest." And I can't, and I couldn't. So I've said it, and I'm done, and I'm happy. Whatever comes from it, however you all decide, that's the way I feel about it. My yes or no, if you feel that everything I've said is nonsense and not true, then go ahead. It's only $10,000. Isn't only $10,000, it is the principle of the issue. That is what I've told you about what the fourth estate is. I've told you that a newspaper to pull that opinion and letters to the editor is a slap in the face of everybody. If you really want to know the truth, slap in the face to you, Dana. Slap in the face to everybody. Why they would do that for $60,000, I haven't got a clue. I do not understand it. I'm sorry that they're doing this. I'm sorry that I have said what I have said, but I'm done. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any comment? Okay, seeing none. Kristi, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Dana, I would like to make a comment also.
Shirley, forget it.
Dana?
Yeah.
Because I really want to applaud Charlie for saying everything he has said. I think that he is not alone in his thoughts and his opinions and his comments. Think a lot of people feel that way, that it really isn't our position to fund a newspaper section that the newspaper apparently doesn't find that important anymore, that they find the sports section more important. So I applaud Charlie for speaking his heart, speaking his mind, being able to lay his head on his pillow tonight and know that he has said the right thing, that he has shared views that many other people obviously would share. I think the bottom line might be that, as Dana said, this might be an experiment. They may not be able to raise the $60,000. And if they raise it this year, they may not be able to raise it next year. So my thoughts are that perhaps it's a good idea to go along with Dana's thoughts, that it would be an experiment. It's $60,000 if they don't raise it, and if they feel that this section of their newspaper becomes more important because of people maybe discontinuing their subscriptions. Because I know a lot of people who don't subscribe to the Desert Sun, that live in the desert here. So I'll go along with the experiment part, and I'll vote yes. But I think it'll be interesting to see how this evolves through the year, how much of an effort they really make to keep this column going and this section of the newspaper, and whether or not there is support from other cities or other entities. Because this is, after all, as Charlie said, this is a nonprofit who is actually raising money to give to a profitable organization. So I thank you again, Charlie, for your comments. Yes, you are brave, and yes, you deserve an applause and accolades for stating your mind and stating what a lot of people probably feel but would not say.
Thank you, Iris. And I just want to say that I said that because I don't want people to think that this council doesn't have a heart, doesn't have a conscience, and just goes along with the flow of whoever is making a motion or who's popular or who's not.
Well, I think, I think, I think other cit, our citizenry, I think leaders from other cities know that we don't go along just to get along, because we have stood alone many times. And we have done what's best when we thought it was the best thing.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Charlie.
You're welcome. And going off of what you said at the beginning of your council comment, yes.
Hang on a second.
Yes.
You're, you don't have to speak, but I don't want to by accident leave you out.
Thank you, Dana.
You know, a few weeks ago, we had a big decision to make on something that affected all of us and the whole community on the In-N-Out Burger issue. And I know there were several people that said, you know, they have to look at an issue and decide what is best for our community. There are going to be people on both sides of the issue. And I think what we have to do is to make a decision. Is this something that will improve the life, the lifestyle of our residents, or will it not? And I think everything we do here is really to improve the lives of our residents. And we have to make a judgment. I don't think it's the $10,000 that's the issue here. It's really an issue of what we need to do to support our community. And it's a tough decision. Charlie really came out and spilled his whole feelings out there. And there are other people that feel the same way, I'm sure. But we have to look to the future and determine what is best for our community. And maybe it's, right now, it's a yes. And let's look at it in a year and see where our money's going, and does our community benefit from that kind of a contribution?
Thank you, Richard. Okay, can we have a vote, please, Kristi?
There's no motion or second on the table, Mr. Mayor.
I, I move adoption of the proposition of approving a $10,000 donation to the Coachella Valley Journalism Foundation in support of a full-time opinion editor at the Desert Sun.
And I'll second.
Dan.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kristi, please take the vote.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
No.
Mayor Protim Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries for one, with the council member Townsend against.
Thank you, Kristi. We will now move on to item number 11 on our agenda, which is the COVID-19 State of Emergency Update and Related Actions. I'll be doing this brief staff report. There are no formal recommendations or approvals that staff needs from the city council. So there's three areas that I'm going to give an update on. The first area is the Great Plates Delivery Program. So this program is still active through February 6th. We are still taking new participants and new restaurants as they apply. There are currently 368 active participants within the program. Since the inception of the program, we have served over 200,000 meals to at-risk seniors in our community through this program. We have spent $4.6 million on this program to date, with the city's cost share of that $4.6 million at just under $288,000. This has been a very powerful program in our community, one from a health and safety standpoint. We are providing three meals a day to at-risk seniors within our community that qualify for the program. Those meals are delivered to their doors. At the same time, we have, through this program, spent $4.6 million in 17 local Rancho Mirage restaurants to provide those meals, all at a city cost of $288,000. So it's been a very powerful program for the participants who get free meals and for our struggling restaurants that have a steady supply of meals and funds coming through. The curative testing, COVID-19 testing site at the Rancho Mirage Library, we've had 33 days of testing. That's been approximately 23,000 tests have been administered through our site. The seven-day positivity rate from our site is 18.3%. So the virus activity is still very high. And this site will be extended through the end of March, as long as the demand is there. So if the site is no longer being utilized, meaning people are no longer coming in to get tested, then it could end before March. But right now, it's extended through March for a testing site. We also, last week, on Friday, launched the Rancho Mirage Small Business Relief Grant Program. To date, we have received 37 applications from locally-owned businesses in Rancho Mirage. The awards through that program depend on the size of the company and the number of employees. So those grants will range between 5,000 up to 10,000 per business. And the review of the applications will be completed on February 1st. A hot topic in our community, and I think really across the county and the state and even the nation, are the availability or lack thereof of the vaccinations. So many of you on the council have received some frustrated emails from people that cannot get an appointment. I know I have as well. The city is within our standard communication, releasing the information that County Public Health gives us on the vaccinations. Anytime they open up new appointments, we are doing a special e-blast that those appointments will become available today. They were available, we made an announcement yesterday that they were available today at noon. And the situation with the vaccines is the demand is extreme, and the doses of vaccines are very limited. And so it's creating this situation where we just don't have enough doses to get to the people that are eligible for it. And I would urge anyone out there to keep trying. I know the county's website, due to the amount of volume that it had, their appointment website is going in and out. And this most recent round of appointments is already booked out. But as they get more vaccine, they are making more appointments available. It is just going to take a little bit of patience by all of us to wait for additional doses of vaccine. The county is doing a good job of, once they get to distribution, of getting those out to the centers and making the appointments available to the public. It's just a simple case of, they do not have enough vaccines. And the last estimate I heard from the county was in Riverside County, there are over 700,000 eligible people, and they have extremely limited doses, which is why these appointments are going so fast. And--
Isaiah?
Yes?
Will we be able to offer the vaccine at all in sometime in the future?
So that is still unknown, council member. We have obviously volunteered the use of our library as a point of distribution to the county. Right now, you know, because of how limited the doses are, there's not a huge demand for additional facilities. But we have told them, hey, feel free. We're a great Mid Valley location. You know, at some point in the future, when more doses become available, much like with testing, you know, in, in the early days of the pandemic, because of the supply chain and limited tests, you almost couldn't get a COVID test. And then, you know, months later, we have a free COVID testing site, and anybody that wants to can go get a test at our library. So in the early days of the pandemic, there's no way our library would have been a testing site because of the limited supply of tests. But time and the supply chain caught up, and now our library is a testing site. So we're, we're doing what we can to offer, but at the end of the day, it's just going to take time and for that supply chain and more doses to come in before we probably become a relevant point of distribution. So it's just going to take some time for the county to get, and the supply chain to pick up, so that there are more doses available for those that are seniors in our community.
Isaiah, if I can make a comment also, because a lot of people, as you say, have written to all of us. I think people need to know, if they don't already, that even if you get a, an appointment, you may be waiting for an hour or two in line. Somebody I know went to San Bernardino, some people have gone to Beaumont, some people have gone to Lake Elsinore. But this story seems to be the same, that prepare to wait an hour or two if you feel you want to. Maybe you can bring something to sit on. I don't know if that's permitted, if you're going to be out in a parking lot, if you're going to be in a covered area. Or if you're not going to be in a covered area, you may want to bring an umbrella. You may want to bring a book with you, bring some water with you. But be prepared to wait. You may get lucky and not have to, but for all indications that I'm getting, everyone has waited at least an hour and possibly two to get their vaccination. So thank you.
And anyone interested in maybe some more detailed information, the county's been doing a good job of releasing the numbers behind, here's how many vaccine doses we're receiving, and this is where they're going. You know, you can go to the County Public Health website, all that information's right there. You can also go to the city's website, and we provide that information, and also links to the County Public Health website. So anyone really wanting some more information on this topic, or to know where they could potentially register, when appointments do become available. And sometimes, you know, those dates and times of when they're available will fluctuate. So the county is now giving a 24-hour notice with a press release, and then the site goes live for their appointments, and they book up very quick. So if you are interested in getting an appointment, you need to be on your computer and, and ready to go through the process as soon as those appointments become available. But like anything, like we saw with the COVID tests in the beginning of the pandemic, it can take some time for these supply chains to pick up. And so just a little bit of patience from everybody, I'm sure, will be appreciated. And the county is doing everything in their power, as is the state, to make sure that they get these doses into arms. And with that, that concludes my update on the COVID-19 State of Emergency. Before we go to the council for any additional comments or questions, let's go ahead and open up the public comment period on this item. So if any member of the public would like to make a comment, now's the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would hit the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone to make a public comment. Now, before we go to our remote audience, is there anyone here in person that would like to make a comment? Seeing no one here in person, go back to the remote audience. And we don't have anyone that's indicated that they would like to make a comment. So we'll go ahead and close that portion of the meeting, and I will turn this back over to you, Mr. Mayor, and the council.
Isaiah? Isaiah, I have a question.
Yes.
On the Great Plates Program, how many restaurants do we have participating?
It's somewhere around 17, I believe.
Is it possible to get the names of all those restaurants that are participating so we can not only thank them for the job they're doing, but also direct some of our own meals to those restaurants?
Yeah, absolutely. I actually think I have a list here. Our restaurants have been great partners with this program. Obviously, you know, at a very high level, you know, you can talk about this program and how it's been great. There is a ton of logistics behind delivering these meals, diet restrictions, and preparation. The restaurants have all been working very well together, because in many a times, you sometimes have one restaurant that prepares, let's say, breakfast, a different restaurant will do the lunch, and a different restaurant will do the dinner, and then an even different restaurant after that is doing delivery. So they're all coordinating with each other and with the city. So our restaurants have been very valuable partners and have been a huge part of what has made this program a success. this program a success. So give me a minute here, and let me see if I can pull up that list.
Okay, and Isaiah, when you do pull up the list, perhaps that list of restaurants can be included in our Rancho Mirage newsletter that goes out. Because I know a lot of people would like to support those restaurants, and especially if they know they're open, and participating in our Great Plates Program.
Great idea, and we will do that. All right, so I will read this list, and then, as councilmember Smotrich recommended, we will definitely get this out, so that people understand who is contributing to the success of this program. So we have Bernie's, Catalan, Country Club Cafe, Drink, Hibachi, Eye Pastries, Los Consuelas, Moracas, Norma's, Pastry Swan, Sandbox, Shabby Shabu's Inn, Shame on the Moon, The Palms Cafe, The Slice, and Wally's is who I have on this list right here. But we will definitely follow up, highlighting these restaurants, because they really have been fantastic partners with this program.
When you can utilize a restaurant like Wally's in this kind of a program, it really makes it above and beyond most. So, great opportunities.
Shame on the Moon, too.
Shame on the, you're shame on the Moon, too, yeah. There's a whole bunch of restaurants in there that we should just go out and say, thank you very much for what you're doing. You're making this program successful. And it may go on for a few more months, so.
Yeah, and some of them are actually closed. They're not doing anything but providing meals through this program. And then others are still open for takeout. It just, it kind of depends. But definitely, even for the ones that are closed, hopefully, as more vaccine doses become available, and the pandemic becomes less of a threat, we start to see some return of outdoor dining, and then eventually indoor dining. So we will definitely do some communication to highlight our restaurant partners in this program.
Great. That's wonderful. Because I know we've driven by, on occasion, on our three outings a month that we do, driven by restaurants that we didn't even realize were open. And then we find out that they're part of our Great Plates Program. So I know that people have called me and said, do I know who's even open? Because the restaurants look closed for the most part.
Yeah, we'll definitely
That would be a great addition, to have that in our newsletter.
Yeah, we absolutely will. We'll provide maybe the, kind of the current status, a link to the website, and contact information for that business, so that it makes it easy for somebody to do a few clicks, or pick up the phone, and get a to-go order.
Great. Thank you.
And I know many of our restaurants have, are obviously adapted to the current environment, and are, either through Uber Eats or Grubhub, also partnering with them to allow you to order your meals through delivery services as well.
Yep. Okay.
Staff really, really should be commended on everything that they're doing to make this program successful. And I'm sure Gabe has just been the key to making this success.
Yeah, our COVID team has staff from multiple departments, but really, the lead on this program is Jessica Polian. She has, she's the main staff member under the program. She receives about 300 communications a week, on average, with the participants of this program, and she gets back to every single one.
Yeah.
So she's been doing a fantastic job. We can't thank Jessica enough for the work that she's put into this. And it was one of those things that she got assigned, and she's done a great job. And she also happened to be our employee of the year this last year. And much of that was for her great work with this program. All right, with that, if there's no more questions from the council, that's it. There's no action items. This was just an update. So we can ask our city attorney to summarize the closed session agenda. Steve?
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, now the city council is going to recess into closed session regarding a significant exposure to litigation item. That's pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9. That's one potential case, and that's related to the threats of litigation from the short-term rental industry. And we're not the only targets in the valley. The second item is regards existing litigation that's pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. Actually, there's three cases we're going to discuss. Hometown Colony versus City of Rancho Mirage, and the City of Rancho Mirage Mobile Home Care Practices Commission, Safe Rancho Mirage versus City of Rancho Mirage, and Horizon Pacific Rancho Cove LLC versus City of Rancho Mirage. So I'm going to provide status reports on those four items.
All right.
I'll see you in closed session.
Thank you.
How many minutes? We should go right into it now, Isaiah, or should we take a break, or what?
So the city council, you, we'll go right into the closed session. All right, we will now, the city council will now recess into closed session.
Isaiah, is it rolling right over?
No, you have a separate meeting link, so.
All right, so leave it and come back, right?
Yes, yes, this me, this, this link stays live.
We'll close this out, and then come back on another one.
Close it out, Dana. Then we'll come back. It'll come up on the screen.
Yeah, you'll leave this meeting.
Charlie, I'm like you, I'd
Well, you and I both, buddy.
I want somebody to tell me.
Me too, yeah. I take nothing for granted when it comes to this, Dana.
Me too.
All right, leaving.
All right, thank you. It's 4:26, and we are done with closed session. And I'm here to report that the city council took no reportable action on any of the closed session items. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.